Call this meeting the order please. And then body order on this and we'll salute the flag. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any citizen desiring to be heard. Hey Dan.
Good morning. I want to thank you guys, you're doing a great job. The more these meetings I sit in, the more I find out what all you do. So thank you for the help. I tried finding out about the Jail Ward Trust Meeting, so I went to the Logan County website. I know a month ago you talked about updating the website and getting more information, Freedom of Act, Freedom of Information Act and all that. But I would encourage you guys to get your, like the Commissioners' Meetings are on that, on the calendar. I posted up, you know, March and April's calendar. Really, it shows that just the excited board we met, so. I think you ought to. I want to encourage you guys, I know you're doing something on that. But if you could expedite that, that would help to let the citizens know when you meet and how you meet. So but I know you've got a lot on your plate. Thank you for all that you're doing.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Hey Dan. Anyone else? Very good. Moving on to item number four. Consideration possible action on improving minutes of March 13th, 2015. Still move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Most passes. And item number five. Consideration possible action on improving final plan of Timberland Hills Division in the northwest quarter of section seven sixteen.
We've got 127 lots, minimum of one acre, majority are greater than acre. So I think ours is.
What part of the water we want you?
Thank you. Oh, it's a post to college.
Post to college, that's in my addition. It's one mile, I think the entry is about 1.3 miles east of Douglas, east of the Douglas and 33 intersections. So it's dirt gravel road. Was Tracy going to say if you could come up with gravel?
We can ask.
I guess my mind might already be set. You might say you're kind of, you've already looked at the road issues. I mean, as far as we. Some of the things we talk about as Commissioners, you know, is this housing additions going, you know, we've got standards for county roads and oftentimes we're asked to take those on. And that would be my.
I would have that question too, as to whether it would be a private roads or public roads.
Yeah, it's private, the homeowners association is to provide maintenance for the roads.
And I've already inquired. The county doesn't have any line building on this.
Oftentimes, you know, I'm experiencing that now, where we take it in, housing additions like this, and they fill them in, and then they come back and ask the county to take on the responsibility of maintaining them.
Sure.
And then we end up going back and trying to refinish an asphalt road that's only about that thick instead of this thick.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, there will be gravel roads and, you know, we set up the HOA, you know, immediately and start, you know, when people, you know, suddenly, you know, let the dues, and then we try to establish a road fund in addition. So we, you know, hopefully we'll probably alleviate some of that.
You weren't been to act, don't get all the names and.
Yes, yeah, it always already.
You know, one of your competitors, Dan Linder, he's doing all the roads in concrete now.
Wow.
And he says it's about, well, it's been a year now, but I talked to him. He said about 17% more, but.
17 really, it's usually.
But the. Always make sure that you go through.
It doesn't hurt roads though.
And then it is.
Because see, you got all these builders, they're bringing in all kinds of different companies and all that kind of stuff, and just airs them up.
Trash trucks are a big culprit too.
Yes, yeah. They're also a big culprit.
That's a weak link, yeah.
Living sun. I do question the, well, maybe not that one set up, one that I'm questioning drainage on.
Going back in the past, what happened is they would take news.
So anybody buys that very, very wise. I assume you're going to make them have their own wells. Why? Okay. They would be why, why to have a well, but where they start actually building on that property. And also, I would implore that they have 30 to casing on that. The law only requires ten. But in that particular area, you're going to need 30 because it's going to start drawing some of that contamination if you don't get it down. So, you know, but now, what you guys do is your own business. And, you know, I really, like I said, the county really doesn't have a say so in that.
Commissioner, just so you all know, quite a few years back, this board put in place a policy for flats that when a developer creates one and they're ready to have it filed, they must bring it to the parks office first so that we can look it over, make sure that the roads are addressed and specifically says they're not county maintained roads. It's on the flat, that they've been through 911 addressing, now all of that kind of stuff. So they do that first, and then it comes here, then they'll take it back over.
And here's, you know, there's a few of those pictures.
Oh, sure.
This is Seth's assistant, so she's showing her how the process goes.
Right, right. We're in the middle of getting ready to do some serious studies on all those old oil wells from the 40s and 50s.
Go ahead and move to the. Heard the final plan.
I'll second.
He might want to do a resistivity study on that place too. All three of those additions that you're looking at.
What type of study?
Resistivity, it's resistance.
Oh, resistive, yeah.
Yeah. It'll tell you an awful lot about that.
I've got some pictures from 1957 of that.
Wow.
There it is.
I bet it's changed a bit.
Yeah. Here and there. That whole area was full of oil activity. And then you have all these pipelines in there forever. And yes, they broke. Actually have a picture of one that just broke and oil's all over the place.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Not there.
Yeah. That'll be interesting to see what.
And that was for the any kind of environmental studies or anything, for the corporation.
Probably before you were born too, right?
No.
No, not quite.
Now, I've been around about two centuries.
All over the country.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Oh, I should stop that.
Have a good day.
You second.
I take. About 10 minutes.
That move, that motion has passed. All right. Number six. Consideration possible action on acknowledging execution of contract with Ron Welcher Construction Inc. for Logan County Rural Water District, number two water treatment project.
Long time ago, when I started working with Logan County for the first time, I said that what I would do is to promise you that I would always keep you informed. You guys sponsor these projects for people, and if you're not careful, you lose track of them. That happened before, did it, Troy? Anyway, at this point, you all awarded this contract a few weeks back. The water district met and also awarded, recommended that we award to Welcher Construction. At this point, the water district has executed the contract. Their attorney has looked at the bonds and insurance and contract documents and signed off on them. So today's action is just your acknowledgement that all this has been done, and there is a place of leisure for you to.
I think it's just for money.
For money, yeah.
Thanks for following up with us.
You did a good job, Miller, appreciate it.
Millie, I'm trying.
Millie's always been careful. No question. Here goes some more federal dollars. If you guys want to check it out.
I'll move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Most passes on to number seven.
Thank you, Miller.
Open sealed bid, 2015 CBDG. Two for asphalt road paving project in Green Oaks Estates and consideration possible action on awarding said bid.
We received but one bid. We only have one qualified vendor. We did receive a letter, just so you all will know from Blevins Asphalt, that they were not going to bid on it.
This bid packet was sent out to 15 contractors. Yeah, so I'd like to open this and make sure all the affidavit that's in there, we can read it. It does contain a non collusion affidavit, a business relationship affidavit. They do acknowledge, you received an addendum number one, which was the only addendum. They do have their 5% bid on. So it is a responsible bid. Reading the prices allowed, we had a bid of 126,365, which was on the Green Oaks Way overlay. And then we have a bid of $72,050, 72050 on the Cedar Lane Road overlay. Because you all only received one bid, you have to get permission from the Department of Commerce before it can be awarded. We also want to look at it to see in terms of where we are on the money and what was in the budget. I went ahead, because we had pre-qualified the bidders and we knew that we would only have one, I went ahead and prepared a letter to Department of Commerce that is asking their permission to award. The other things that we do is we check the federal debarred list, and that has been done, and they are not debarred from federal grants. But you all have in the way of cash dollars available for this project. It does have some labor and equipment that the guys will be doing the road preparation. You have available 167,430.25. Let's add these two together here quickly.
So you all had a pre-bid conference?
We had a pre-bid meeting.
Pre-bid meeting.
So these two bids total 198,415, and you have 167,430.25.
Okay.
Yeah.
Leaving you with 30,984.75. If these are both awarded, that the county would need to come up with other monies.
I think we can do that. 34, you said?
30,984.75.
30,984.75. Don't see a problem with that.
Well, I don't. With your approval of that letter, we'll start the approval process from Department of Commerce. I'll get a copy of this and I'll leave you with the original.
Do you think you'll have that approval for this to go on for the seventh, or do you need to go on to the 15th?
Seven, we'll have it.
So where's the other 30,000 going to come from?
Yeah, it come out of our.
I don't know. In your district?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless you guys wanted to come another.
That's why I asked, Mike.
I understand. Now, we can handle it.
I thought maybe you want to donate that to the county.
Well, I'm donating a road to the county. All right.
I don't have a problem.
Actually, it's going to be a table towards April 7th.
Table to the 7th.
Right. But I don't have a problem with the letter. But I mean, it's not on the agenda.
It's part of the thing. I don't know that it specifically needed to be set out as an agenda item. It's part of the process.
All righty, no action. No action.
Thank you very much. Actually, it'll be a table, not a no action. We did open them.
Well, that'll be no action.
Moving on to number eight. Open sealed bid, 2015 dash 14 for one used bus style motorhome service on mobile command center for the sheriff's office and consideration possible action on awarding said bid.
We received one bid. I want to let you know that we sent out four bid packets, as well as the publication. We received one.
What he's doing, Johnny Carlson.
Yeah, but he probably doesn't know the answer before he.
I'm pretty sure I already know the answer to this one too. One used bus. Okay. Total price, 59,849 dollars. Fred, you want to look at this?
Please.
Want to take it back to study it or?
Yeah, if I can, or if I need to copy it or.
I mean, you can look at it here if you want. To wait or leave with it, then we make you a copy. You can't take the original.
Okay.
So 50. Your board is encouraged to take a copy and go back and discuss it and, yeah.
We can do action on Monday. Well, not the 10th.
Yes, we haven't posted the agenda for Monday, so we can do the seventh to award it. Yes.
You want to take a copy?
We can put it off to the 15th?
Just do that.
Okay.
Does this go out here simply? All right. Table to the 15th. Item number nine. Consideration possible action on proving ODOT claim for Logan County Rural Water District number one utility relocation fees in the amount of $16,080 for a coal train project.
This is a 3248 form for reimbursement for rural services for coal train watering. I've got copies of all the invoices and checks.
So $16,080 you get us.
I guess you're up to 81% of the engineering contract for five miles of water line.
And these will actually be signed by Commissioner for District One, not the chairman, right? I know, it's usually always the district. This be the coal train. I did two sets.
So why, why, why does this come to the board to find out?
Because ODOT wants to know that it came through here to be approved, to assign these monies. Because essentially, you're assigning the ODOT money allotted for the coal train project to be paid directly to Rural Water District One for the cost of the utility relocation.
Okay, this is a required board action, I guess. Required.
Because it's an assignment of those monies, so yeah.
Then I wouldn't be the only one signing it.
All I can tell you is what the forms are. Ryan, if you know any better. The forms are only set up for the signature of the claimant.
Right, that's generally the way, and it's on your project, so that's who we have sign it. And we run it through the county Commissioners' Meeting, so, you know, everybody knows what's going on.
So we have submitted some of these before with just one signature?
Oh, they're always this way. I mean, this is the ODOT form.
Right.
But the board action of the assignment of the fees that is recorded in the minutes.
We can all three sign it before.
No, I just, it just doesn't. It doesn't, Jim, you know. Stay in my little state department.
Not supposed to.
ODOT? Yeah. Yeah. ODOT. When we get down, when we get down to the hard times to talk, I've got comments there too.
Ryan.
So where am I supposed to sign?
Where I got those arrows pointed.
With the red one or the green?
Both of them.
That's on top, Troy says for Logan County Rural Water District.
That you're assigning it to them. You're approving that. Did you need more than one?
We just need one.
You need this one signed?
Please. They get an original, that leaves an original here.
So which one's the original?
Well, we have two original signatures.
Can you make a motion in this moment?
I guess I can.
Yes, I can say.
All, all those in favor. All opposed, all she carries. All right. Item 10. Have consideration possible action improving detention, transportation, transportation claim in the amount of $959.70 for February 15th for Sheriff's Office.
I'll make a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All she carries. On to item 11. Is consideration possible action on proving the following temporary road passing permit for Britman Fast Line Crescent Services and Selective. Crescent Services, okay. Always ten. All the times the bid been going for west, 18 months, three west. That's what ancient holds.
In 13, we did 959.70, but just short of 1,000 of them in 13. Last year, we did less than 500.
Kind of slow down over there, mark the line.
Yeah. You guys look like you're having a lot of fun out there.
Yeah. Just to see if you're not all messed up. You want?
Yeah.
I heard Mr. Buffer is one of them. Said Mr. Buffer going to take over fire team. He got a little more energy.
Yeah, well, I don't know anything.
Manuel doing well?
Oh, yeah.
He's such an asset to your community.
Money, lots to me, your areas. Mine.
And your district too.
Is it mine?
Uh, there's road, they work on the entrance.
No, it's, it's my area.
Also.
Isn't that 15 north? No, no, no. Indian Meridian is dividing line.
Oh, okay.
Works my mind. A half mile on Indian Meridian. From, I think it's Canada 76, going north a half mile. Trying to get it up and push. We won't shoot for the whole mile, but there wasn't enough funds to do the whole mile like it was done.
Chairman, we need action on that.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries on to number 12. Consideration possible action on proving resolutions appointing receiving officers for various accounts.
I have one for Langston Fire Department.
Okay. Make main order. Receiving officer, that's cool. All right. Jason, oh, Jason, yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'll make that motion. On that. Favor.
Aye.
Carries on to item 13. Consideration possible action on proving resolutions appointing requisition officers for various accounts.
I have two, one for Langston Fire Department, one for Marshall Fire Department.
Go. Cool. Jerry Garcia. Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Troy, do you, these, want to put people on these for receiving officer, will I have? Do we explain the rules to them, what they need to do?
We do.
I know you used to do it in the past, yes.
Over the way of deals. Auditor coming in saying this, this, and this is wrong. That's why I was never trying to do it. And then the next thing you know, I would be cooking it up.
Someone does a certain fire department that way. A weekly.
We've also found that we can tell, and sometimes it doesn't seem to penetrate, and we retain. We've also found that we can tell, and sometimes it doesn't seem to penetrate, and we retain. I need a second on Commissioner Pearson's motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Much carries fourteen, consideration possible action on the consent budget.
I roll. There are no transfers, seems to be.
So many people want to get paid though, huh? See if he's on that display town, let him get that figured out. Lucky for that, he's not here. Hey Troy, this very quick deal.
We're just a pass-through agency for the state money that goes to the adult drug court for the administrative costs, so, um, we receive the money from the state, they draw a P.O. for that month's admin, we write the check.
The three thousand? Three thousand, yeah.
If he was nice, he'd push that down just a couple inches and help you out.
We can always burn me.
I think he, he was looking at it as a...
I just want to take it that way, though, but see how far he can shoot.
As far as I can see, well, somebody thought it was long. Homewave LLC, what's that, Mr. Fisher?
It's part of the telephone system that they receive a commission for. I believe that that's actually the video call.
Feel like we got this one, that's six hundred thirty-seven dollars and cents profit from the commissary, I wonder what the total sales were.
That figure, I don't know. We can get it from the service department. If I'm not mistaken, they get three percent, but I'd have to double check.
All these royalty checks, they just go straight into my hand and royalty?
No, certainly, go into general.
Well, we could change it, yes.
So we sold the one?
Guthrie Fire Department in September by resolution. And we just now got the check for. These are the blankets.
No, I'm outside in the wrong place. How do we earn rebates from office people?
Part of the, the contract with, I don't believe it's through NACO. Anyway, part of that says that they'll give an annual rebate based on, on the amount of business that we've done with them. And it averages about six hundred dollars a year.
Only kind of get them if you take the kit back and I do it better.
I ain't taking no kick there.
It's new, all right.
While we're on YouTube and all. Looks like they just lowered the price so they wouldn't have to do all that rebate stuff.
I didn't draw the contract, but you know, even the, the P card, there was a rebate offered for P card use.
Or same job for how many users. My bank just charged me an extra three percent, I accepted those cards, it was a retail. Quit that, didn't it?
Got a bunch of clients that go over that P card.
Not one county have I found is actually using it.
So a lot of the counties use it, so just the sheriff's office now?
Well, the sheriff's office has an actual credit card. By statute, they're the only ones that can. The state did develop a P card system that the state uses, and then they expanded it to the counties. But the way that it's set up to operate is insane for the counties to use. Even the auditor's office has said, you know, tread very lightly if you, if you choose to go down that road, uh, with the way that it's set up. So I actually, um, made that inquiry just fairly recently, a few months ago, of all the counties, if any of them have went to using it, none have.
The only advantage I can see is using a card like that is doing internet purchases.
And, and that was, um, one of the things I enquired was...
Because you can't save money that way.
Absolutely. Part, part of what we enquired was obtaining one just for the purchasing agent for that specific type reason.
Right.
Um, but even that was going to be difficult because of all the different accounts that shop, and that one person isn't a requisitioning officer for all involved, so it even became this unmonstrated utilization for that purpose.
Yeah. Well, I mean, on one hand, it'd be handy, but there's a lot of room for errors.
I think both of you sat in on that webinar, we, we get it in here for everyone that the state put on, and it was, it's just... It is not set up in the way that county purchasing has to operate.
Work with those on the, on the federal level. Cards.
No, we, we had a lot of issues with people using them for things that they weren't supposed to use.
Alba has it, uh, City of Guthrie has one.
But the way county government, county purchasing is set up to operate, they don't congeal well with this P card system. And the different reports that have to be done, and the fact that the cards have to be issued specifically to an individual opens up, like Martin said, you find a lot of, you know, errors, and then someone's got to oversight that. It, it's just not feasible in the way that it's set up. I would love to be able to use for internet. However, I have heard, and I have not had the chance to investigate, that Amazon is allowing purchase order type business setup. Now, I have not got into that because there's some issues, but if, if I can make that happen, I will.
Perilous, perilous, I do a lot of Amazon. They also have a rebate thing, uh, so... Might be able to throw that rebate thing onto nonprofits.
Get that one out of there.
Aren't you up for that, they bring your stuff?
We're gonna do a fuel man car, a couple of raiders. Save some, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, is this BPO for Ray's Plumbing on the cover of the sheriff's office, if you mind using it for our building over there?
I thought you had a new plumber over there.
I was down on my hands and knees crawling around, I didn't think that's saying. That's about as close to being plumbing well as we get.
Does it seem like a gray line to stop with?
Yeah, Mike, it was a, it was a temporary thing too, but it wasn't, it wasn't...
Door to.
When I got there, hadn't been licking for a while, because it was all dried up, the head of the paint, and it smelled a little nasty back there. But it wasn't no nine hundred dollar fix, and whatever that estimate was.
Yeah, that was pretty high estimate.
I don't remember what it was, it was totally cheap. One plumber. But I got a board in the business. Not that my board wants to do the paperwork, because he hasn't liked it in there either. How we in charge?
Mind passing these, they just required his signature, but that way you all can look at them. That would be the election board salary claim and the court clerk's utility claim.
I did have a pretty good comment for that, working by the drink, we're gonna have to pass that, Bill. Can't drink the water, you're gonna have to have something drank by this time.
What are you gonna use to chase?
Ain't gonna be no water.
By the way, I gave one of your residents a ride, I go with district two last week. There was this ambulance parked in on Highway three thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I stopped, gonna be Good Samaritan, helped out one of her first responders, well, no, it was ambulance, it wasn't an ambulance service anymore, it'd been sold to one of your residents.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, and it was parked in, he didn't have jack, it was about a two-hour ordeal before I finally got him home.
I bet he appreciated the ride.
He did.
This is just set up for the chairman of science and secretary, the election board secretary now. You can tell he's on the courthouse for the...
Just for a month?
The state reimburses us that per month.
I don't think it's quite.
It does not cover her whole salary, no.
Oh, I thought you said utilities.
Oh, no.
No, that one's the election board.
Okay, that's utilities, we need to get some insulation over there.
Now, that will take the whole courthouse utility and then the third that the courts pay.
Wow. Wow.
Alcoholic beverage tax.
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda items, so.
All in favor?
Aye. Fifteen.
Number fifteen, consideration possible action improving payment for claims for March fifteenth.
Wake up, backer, Chris, you can't sleep if we can't.
I'm concentrating on breathing right now. Troy, how many county offices would like to have a public auction?
Um, I think that that would be great, I'm hearing the trickle down, I think we've all got stuff we'd like to clean out.
I'm always open.
Well, I got some stuff I certainly like to get rid of.
I have playroom. If you want to bring it to...
Are you offering your yard? Well, that's where we held the last one, was it?
That's where we normally do have, it's real close to I thirty-five, everybody can find it. Um, they should be done with construction of thirty-three by the time we have it.
I don't know when is that supposed to end?
Another month and a half or two.
Man, you don't realize everyone in demand.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's crazy. Try to avoid it as much as I can.
I have a couple of things to bring to the board's attention, can I do that while y'all are signing, or would you rather I be quiet?
I'd really do it right now.
Absolutely, get her knocked out, get out of here.
Um, I'm gonna be in floor finish, who is, takes care of the floor in courthouse, that's brought me these quotes. Uh, the, the floors have not been stripped in over four years, so the buildup is starting to, to take place. And it's a quote to strip and refinish, redo the first floor, the restrooms, all of that area. Generally, the court clerk takes care of the second floor, but she doesn't have the money for, for this time. And so it would be, if the second floor got done, it would be up to you all to do them. Uh, the quote for the first floor, and I have them all here, and I'll pass it out. And it's twenty-three fifty-four, twenty-five, and the second floor is nine sixty, nine hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty cents, if you want to look at those quotes, so that's something to ponder. The other thing is, um, when the S.L.A. grant was approved, you know, it went from ten thousand to twenty thousand, and at that time that, that, uh, David addressed the board, he asked about the extra... And at that time that David addressed the board, he asked about the extra funding being able to be used to do a pull behind light system to be used for emergencies, and I think the board was pretty open to that.
I think Molly had a comment on that, probably been with that conversation.
I wasn't listening to you.
Sign board for David, twenty thousand dollar money versus a ten.
So the funding, they pay it quarterly, and we got the first five thousand. That money always goes into general, but again, we're gonna get twenty instead of ten that will go into the general. So my question for you all to ponder and decide is if you were gonna use the other funding to buy that, we would need to move money from general government capital outlay to civil defense capital outlay to make that purchase. But the grant did go through and the money's starting to flow. So that was kind of what I was just bringing to your attention. For him to purchase that, if that's what you all want to do, we need to do a transfer.
Molly, I just remember when he said that he wanted, with that grant money, wanted to buy something.
Yes.
You had another, maybe, you had another idea that was, at the time I thought was pretty good. I can't remember what it is though.
You got that same...
I think at that time is when he mentioned the city maybe up on what they pay...
I tell you, I did meet with the city and, of course, they couldn't confirm or deny anything.
I think it was buying a bulldozer, if I remember the conversation.
Oh, yeah, I liked the sound of that, doesn't it? But I did approach the city manager about up to what they paid on David's contract, at least three thousand dollars. Of course, you had to take it to her board. See what her board advises hers, so, but I did sit down and visit with them.
City is still looking for money, for a budget, right?
Yeah, I was looking for a little furor, but I think everybody's in that situation. Troy, what have we got in cap on that lane?
One hundred ninety-four thousand. We haven't had to use it up to this point.
I'd like to, of course, I want the floor to split nicely, I'd like to redo the front of it, paint it, have someone paint it.
It desperately needs...
Well, it's not on the painting, but you got a lot of rock wood.
Yeah, the wood itself around those doors will have to be replaced since rotted out.
But I don't have a problem with stripping floors and I wanted to look present, but I really would like to get some pricing and repaint the front.
Just the front or the whole area that needs painted? The cornice all around the top, you know, is starting to rust out and the paint's flaked off, so, and there's a lot of wood, very tall, wood trims and decorative pieces that there's not a drop of paint on.
At first, I wouldn't mind getting a pole on the whole thing.
Yeah.
Do you all have, I don't know, I mean, it would have to be someone qualified. I don't know what to look for, what direction to go to find someone that would, just any painter out of the phone, I don't know. Would it have to be someone special to do that cornice and that old woodwork, or?
They just need to be bonded, right? Yeah, do work that can...
Well, I imagine it would end up being bid because the cost, I think if you're looking at doing the whole building would be...
Well, it'd be kind of a historical cornice or something.
Well, that's the other thing, everything on the outside has to be to the historical society's liking. But those front door, that wood around the front...
Are you going with money?
No, but I have authority.
There's no paint in it, I mean, it really needs, really, really needs done. As well as the other things, since you brought up the front of the courthouse, trying to get rid of all the ice this year. The sidewalks took a beating and some of the areas that had been patched to fill the holes have kind of been busted up. So we probably need to look at doing something about some repairs to that concrete.
Did we finish on fifteen?
Yeah, I make the motion for fifteen.
On favor? Passes, any citizens' meetings be heard. Okay, okay. On the seventeen comments, announcements, questions by the board of county commissioners.
I got two. Has to do with the, or C E D five. So there's gonna be, there's a change to how the five, the C I R B five-year plan is gonna be, or the changes will be made to that plan. What I was told was all the change, any changes or updates to the five-year plan will have to come to the board commissioners, be approved by the board before any changes are being...
Yeah, five-year plan, that's true.
Right, that's something that they talked about at the last meeting. And then also, on ten April, will be meeting with ODOT, the District Four, ODOT District Four.
Division Four.
And C E D five, our overlay, Logan County part, our meeting will be on the tenth of April with ODOT to go over the plan. I think they're kind of scrambling around looking for where they might cut, when they get cut, not if, but when they get cut. So they're trying to make sure that all the programs and plans are in place and to kind of go over and make sure that nothing falls, falls through, because they're trying to, anyway, that meeting's on the tenth at C E D five headquarters if they're with ODOT. So I'll be there on that day. I was only hoping he was gonna tell me that the C E D districts was fixing to disappear.
That will be second on, that will be second on the agenda that I will...
I'm not a C E D fan.
Unfortunately, you have to have a manager, so I like for it just to come straight.
Sir, you're not, you're not the only one that has that feeling in that group down there right now. It seems to be...
Carol's the same way. She says, hey, I work for the commissioners. We know that you want to do away with the C E Ds. She's good with that, she can find a job wherever, but you still have to have an answer. Away, away the money's...
I'm not saying it's Carol that I have a problem with, it's the whole C E D system.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It's another branch of government that we don't need.
I agree. I had this conversation with Jason. Anytime that the state feels like they can't trust the county commissioners by giving them money because the county commissioners can, it's back in the early eighties, this reason this is done. Right, so what they do is they find, they create another quasi-government organization to fund the money. Exactly. And they siphon off part of it before it gets to, but now it's, that's not more efficient. There is no way that it's more efficient.
And what do they get, program cap, not off the top for the C E Ds?
Well, yeah, and then salary and operation and all that stuff, right? Means go straight to the counties, don't need that C E D.
You got my vote on that one. I will continue to represent, I appreciate it. So April tenth, April tenth?
Yeah, and probably all three of us ought to be there.
Well, I don't know about that, but...
Well, I mean, I've got projects too, and what they're saying is Logan County has too much. We got the Coltrane project, we got another project.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure they're saying that we have too much.
Well, this is the conversation I had with Shannon Shepherd, so...
I think what Shannon was saying is that when you get all these projects on the book, we're spending all this money on engineering and not getting the projects done, so we're gonna start taking our projects off. So now they need to...
See, I have a bridge that was supposed to be constructed this year. We got the engineering selected back to November twelfth, and they lost it, they lost it. Finally, in January, they got it, they say they have it, but we still don't have the engineer's, uh, contract.
They're not spending money on engineering.
And now they're on hold for this April tenth meeting.
They're not negotiating contracts, so they're not spending any money on engineering.
I have three contracts that should have been negotiated sometime ago.
Well, I appreciate you serving on that board.
Yeah, sure.
Because that's just really irritating. Go down there and have steaks for lunch and they're spending tax bills.
It's just like all this P card thing. We have a lot more scrutiny on us, so yeah, a lot of bells and whistles that we can get through. Whereas other governments can, we're the most scrutinized of any elected office, by far, because of those seventy scandals that you're talking about.
Waiting for the sins of what are now our grandfathers.
That's right.
Ex-fathers.
Ex-fathers.
I know that the saying is fathers, but if you look at how far back, those people are now our grandfathers or great-grandfathers. I mean, that's really going back that far, that was all I knew.
You're trying to say he's younger than the rest of the city?
No. I do want to make sure I understood that I go ahead and have the floor stand.
I had to deal on that team, I make the motion for it.
So, you know, that's a good motion, I like that.